The meeting for the Hammond Common Council of April 9th is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation?
.........................................................
Dear God, thank you for bringing us together safely this evening and for the many blessings you have given our city. We pray that our children and families would be safe from harm. Please continue to bring our neighborhoods together and serve us for the safety and growth of our city. Unite us with a common purpose, dedication, and commitment to our city. In your name, amen.
I'd like also, I'd like a moment of silence for the, one of my classmates, Sean Wilburn, who graduated in 1985. He passed away and I'm very close to his mother who stays on May Street and it's very emotional this week for me. Someone I basically grew up with is now gone and went to school with, went to church with. It's really devastating, so if you would please give a moment of silence for his mom and his family. Thank you.
A moment of silence, please, to honor Thomas J. Puplava, educator and community leader in the Robertsdale area for generations. Deep sympathies and prayers to their family. Thank you.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres. Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect, eight present, one absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
The motion to accept the minutes from March 26, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of the meeting of March 26, 2018. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims March 22, 2018 through April 4, 2018 for April 9, 2018. Beginning with claims dated 4/3/18 and ending with claims dated 4/4/18. Claim number 1963 through claim 2226 for a total of $5,051,261.46. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs for approval of claims from March 22 through April 4. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Eight in favor, one absent. Claims pass. Moving on to public hearings. There are none. Communications.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Couple of my constituents are here. They own a piece of property under public expression. They'll address the council in regards to some concerns and the mayor's also here and so he can hear your concern as well in relations to the garbage pickup at the property on Detroit Street and that, I guess they're having some severe problems with the garbage pickup. So, under public expression, you and your wife are more than welcome to speak and address the council. You go not now, at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Building and zoning will be bringing out 1807.
Okay, and as usual, I have the, I'll announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will meet Wednesday, April 11, 2:00 PM. That is on 940 Kenwood. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, April 17, 6:30 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet Friday, April 13, at the Golden Manor Senior Apartments, beginning at 1:00 PM. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 19, 7:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Wednesday, April 18, the Lafayette Neighborhood Crime, Neighborhood Watch will meet at Lafayette School, beginning at 6:30 PM. The South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 19, at the Old Hammond Housing Authority Building on 173rd and Chestnut. That's beginning at 7:00 PM. Also, on Thursday, April 19, the South Holman Neighborhood Watch will meet at Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner of Holman and 173rd, and that begins at 6:30. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 12, beginning at 6:30 PM at Calumet College. This is an excellent opportunity for anyone throughout the city to attend a community or crime watch meeting, to find out what is going on in your neighborhood and also some preventative measures that you can take for you and your family to prevent you from becoming a victim of a crime. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage.
Ordinance dash, 18 dash 07, sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance amending ordinance number 8514 being an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with comprehensive use plan, also known as the Hammond Zoning Ordinance, for purposes of amending title 29 overlay zoning districts to establish new provisions for development within the Oxbow Landing Overlay Zoning District.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for final passage and adoption of 1807.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple. Who was the second?
Scott.
Councilman Spitali, for final passage of 1807. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
The second was from Rakels.
Oh, Rakels? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1807 passes, eight in favor, one absent.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 18 dash 09, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for 2018.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Move through first and second reading, refer to the Finance Committee. It's a public hearing set for May 14, 2018, and a committee meeting set for 5:15 on May 14.
Second.
And that was Councilman Emerson? Who's second? Okay. Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, for first and second reading of 1809, referring to Finance Committee with a meeting on May 14 at 5:15 PM, and also a public hearing on 5:14. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor of that particular ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, Resolution 18 dash 10, sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue its economic development revenue bonds, Series 2018, the Gateway Projects, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Madam President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading with a public hearing on 5:14 at 5:15, and put it in Finance Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Next.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Kalwinski, for first and second reading of 1810, referring to Finance with a committee meeting on 5:14 and a, yes, the committee meeting on 5:14 at 5:15 PM with a public hearing on 5:14. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
This is the ordinance that will authorize the sale of the TIF bonds for the Gateway Project, which is the former River Park site, Oxbow Landing, for the new development going there, and also for the new development going in the Dowling Park, which is a, can I say it? Ice rink? But, there's no, I mean, this is, the sale of these bonds will be paid off by the TIF.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 1810 passes on first and second reading, referring to Finance with a committee meeting at 5:15 PM on May 14, and a public hearing on 5:14. Motion carries.
President Vanez, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 18 R dash 14, sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution recognizing the sectional tournament victory of the 2018 Hammond High Wildcats Basketball Team.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
If I could have the Hammond High School Basketball Team.
Pardon, a motion first.
Okay. I do need a motion first.
I make a motion, then we pass this. Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Rakels, for final passage of ordinance number 18 R dash 14. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to have Hammond High School Basketball Team, please come forward. The mayor's also here, so I'm sure he's proud of you all as well. Coach Moore, if you could possibly give the names of the players as well?
All right, our entire roster, who I have here now, I have Harold Woods, Reggie Abram, Aaron, and I also have Parker Reynolds. The other gentlemen have AAU practice and track, so they weren't able to attend, so I was able to get four guys to come with me. But thank you, council, for recognizing our team and the compliments for this season.
Yes, Councilman.
If we could have Clerk Golick to read the Resolution 18 R 14, and we have two plaques for the Hammond High Basketball Team.
Whereas the Hammond High School Wildcats Basketball Team has succeeded in winning the sectional tournament, a feat not accomplished for many years, and whereas the council finds that the team should be honored for such an accomplishment, now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond as follows. One, the Common Council congratulates the 2018 Hammond High School Wildcats Basketball Team, all the members of the team and their coaches for stellar representation of the high school of their city. Their winning the basketball tournament demonstrated their dedication, hard work, and authentic excellence. Two, this resolution shall be preserved in the permanent records of the City of Hammond.
Also, Clerk Golick, could you please read this plaque for me? I'll let the clerk read it. And then, Councilwoman, you want to read that one, or you want me to read?
Yes, I will. You go right ahead with that.
Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead.
It starts, Anthony Higgs, Third District Councilman of the City of Hammond, Indiana, proudly presents this plaque to the honor, the 2018 Hammond High School Wildcats Basketball Team, on their win at the 2018 sectional tournament. Their victory was the result of hard work and dedication to the athletic excellence. Their achievement reflects great credit on the team, the high school, and the entire city. Congratulations. This plaque is given with the best wishes of Councilman Higgs for the continued success of the Wildcats Team and its coaches.
Gentlemen? The Hammond City Council does have a plaque to present to you as well, on behalf of the entire city council. You know, I learned about basketball by watching my dad play in the church league, and every Sunday, we'd watch basketball on TV, and I'd say, "Who are you for, Dad?", and he would say, "Whatever team", and I said, "Well, I'll be for the other team." That's how I became a Boston Celtics fan. And, so, I especially like watching high school basketball because they still call traveling, and I don't see traveling in the pros very much, or I see it and they never call it. At any rate, the Hammond City Council would like to congratulate the Hammond High Wildcats for your accomplishments throughout the season. Your success is an indication that you learned to take direction from your coaches and trust your teammates, because there is no I in team. For you seniors, the lessons you learned, you can apply them on your road through your future endeavors. And for the underclassmen, you are now the leaders of the team for next year. Set the example and lead with integrity and Wildcat pride. On behalf of the Hammond City Council, once again, congratulations, and I would like to read the plaque that the entire council had made for you. The Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana proudly presents this plaque to honor the 2018 Hammond High School Wildcats Basketball Team, on their historic win in the sectional tournament. Their victory was the result of hard work and dedication to athletic excellence. Their achievement reflects great credit to the team, the high school, and the entire city. Congratulations. This plaque is given with the best wishes of all the members of the city for the continued success of the Wildcats Team and its coaches, and it lists each of the members of the Hammond City Council. Once again, congratulations. (applause).
You guys want to check out my office after this?
Put the players in here. Get the whole council, get them with the mayor and everybody. Come on. You take the picture, you gonna take the best picture.
Thank you.
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 All righty, is there any discussion on the resolution?
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Motion carries, 18 R dash 14 passes, eight in favor, one absent, and congratulations again to the Hammond Wildcats.
Item B, Resolution 18 R dash 15. A resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving the development agreement among the City of Hammond, Indiana, Hammond Redevelopment Commission, City of Hammond Economic Development Commission, and Cube Sports Complex LLC regarding development in the Gateway Allocation Area.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for passage of 18 R 15.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Kalwinski, for final passage of 18 R 15. Any discussion?
Madam, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
The hockey player, I figured. Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 18 R 15 passes, eight in favor, one absent.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Madam.
On the agenda is 1807, intent to consider. By virtue of that passing earlier, that automatically passes. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. The first speaker of the evening is Roosevelt Holloman. If you would please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Roosevelt Holloman. My wife, Lois Holloman, and we're concerned with the property at 412 to 416 Detroit Street in Hammond. We bought the property about five years ago and out of foreclosure, totally rehabbed it, and for the first few years, we had no major problems with dumping. But unfortunately, in the last couple of years, we've had a major problem in dumping on our property. Now, not necessarily on our property, but the dumpster behind our building is sitting on about a, maybe a third of an acre vacant, and our dumpster, by the dumpster being sitting there, and we own the dumpster in terms of the lease, everybody takes the inference to dump on the area, and we, of course, get blamed for it. So we're asking for relief to be able, we only got four units. We're asking if we can have garbage cans for the unit, the people that live in our units, so that we can rid ourselves of the dumpster and the dumpsters, the dumpers. I have pictures showing that we can clean up, we, they pick up our garbage on Wednesday. Thursday, by Thursday or Friday, there's a whole bunch of construction garbage, mattresses, I've got pictures to show, that are right back in front of the garbage cans. Consequently, the garbage truck cannot pick up because of the debris that's in front of the dumpster. So this has been going on for the last couple of years consistently. We've been paying for extra pickups, and this, right now, there, we just passed here tonight, there's a couple of mattresses in front of the dumpster already from last week's pickup. So we're asking if we can be able to have garbage cans for the four people that live in our units, and then thus we can avoid being responsible for the garbage can and the dumps on the property, which we do not own. So that is what we're asking for, some relief from the council.
All righty, thank you, sir. This is not an opportunity for a back and forth, so if you would wait until after the meeting, one of us would be happy to discuss the situation with you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker of the evening is John Madera.
I'm Madera, thank you. Good evening. My name is John Madera. I live in Robertsdale, 1234 Davis Avenue. A week ago, on Good Friday, I was going to church on, going to church, and it happened to be closed, and I bumped into a lady. And we couldn't get into the church because it was closed. We were too early. And we started talking, and then she told me her story. She told me she had breast cancer, and I just was kind of dumbfounded by it, you know? She told me that she lived on 3900 block of Torrance Avenue. And then, one thing led to another, and I realized that a girlfriend, my girlfriend right now, who lives in North Hammond, her mother, who lives on Cameron, about the 4400 block of Cameron, she just had an operation for breast cancer back in January. And make a long story short, come to find out, about half the women in our church have breast cancer. And it all started coming back to me. I was like, what the heck? I thought I was done with this nightmare. The nightmare that I'm referring to was back, starting in 1998, my mother was diagnosed, I lived at 424 Holman Avenue in North Hammond, I lived there for 43 years. My mother was diagnosed with colon cancer. She suffered like you wouldn't believe. And then, we had a duplex. My tenant had colon cancer, and my next door neighbor had colon cancer. Three people in a row all had colon cancer. Well, you all know, anybody that's lived in Hammond, you all know what the resolution was. Maybe some people don't, but Kyle Chemical was kind of fingered. The EPA sued Kyle Chemical in 2000 and for releasing several thousand tons of toxins in... thousand tons of toxins, carcinogens into the air. And it was thought that most of those carcinogens were coming through the air, and primarily into North Hammond. There's a lake breeze off the lake, and we get it into North Hammond. So, I thought this was all said and done. Kyle then was sold to Dover Chemical. I mean, I live up in Robertsdale, and I go by Wolf Lake, I hang out at Wolf Lake and George Lake all the time. And, I mean, it never occurred to me, because occasionally you get a bad smell over there, but not as bad as it used to be years ago. So, but this recent thing got me to thinking. I go, where, why are these people dying of cancer, being diagnosed with cancer? The only thing that I thought of was, the one thing that nobody has talked about, is if they're illegally dumping carcinogens into the sewer, the main sewer lines from Robertsdale go through, down Sheffield Avenue, go through North Hammond to go to the Hammond Sanitary District out here on the Calumet River, Grand Calumet River. Therefore, if you have a sewer pipe that leads to your home, and you have vent stacks, that's how plumbing systems work, you have a vent pipe. Out of those vent pipes, you could be off-gassing chemicals from the main sewer line. And I thought, I'm an engineer, I work in a steel mill. If you know what a common industrial respirator is, most respirators used by the military and rescue people have charcoal filters in it. It's activated charcoal, it neutralizes most, most things. Anyway, we could put filters on our homes for very little money, and maybe save people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The final speaker of the evening is Mr. George Stoya. All righty. Public expression is now closed. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everyone have a good evening.